Okay, we'll start with district highlights and achievements. Or is there public input tonight? You can have the mic. You got about three minutes. Can you cover it in three minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I wrote it down.
Good. Can you introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Krista LePraiser. This is Jamie Spencer. We are here on behalf of the paraprofessionals. So this is kind of on behalf of all of us. We just have came up with a little thing we wanted to say to you guys. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns today. I am here to respectfully request that paraprofessionals be compensated for virtual snow days, just as teachers are. As you know, with the recent changes to the school calendar the last couple of years, where schools ending a week earlier than it used to, and the fact that paraprofessionals really aren't coming to the professional and developed days anymore, many of us are seeing a reduction of at least a week and a half pay compared to like previous years. This reduction is especially concerning because it was already in the budget for virtual days, like that you were going to pay us, but we are not compensated for them, even though we still have responsibilities that are vital to the success of the school day. For elementary schools in particular, paraprofessionals are often the ones responsible for preparing the packets and ensuring students have the materials they need for these virtual days. Personally, for me as a library aide, I know there's work I can do online to help support students and teachers during these virtual days. Additionally, many paraprofessionals have expressed a willingness to take prep work home or even be available online during the virtual snow days to support the learning environment. It's also worth noting that after speaking with some teachers, I did learn that they are only required to be available for a few hours during these virtual days, yet they are continued to receive full compensation. As paraprofessionals, we are dedicated to supporting students and teachers alike, and we believe that we should be compensated for our time on virtual snow days, just like other staff members. I urge the board to consider extending fair compensation for paraprofessionals on virtual snow days. Our commitment to the students does not stop because we would be working remotely, and we deserve to be compensated for the work we continue to do in supporting the educational process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
We'll move on to district highlights and achievements. And is Kristin here? Okay, in your packet you have a really nice annual report flyer in there. If you want to look at that. If you haven't looked at it, just make sure you take a look at it. Library gets a lot of use. It's good to see that. I like that kind of report, too. It's very easy to see everything. Okay, then we'll move on to the health services report. Is Shelby, is she? Okay. I'm not going to read these reports, just so you know, but just go through that. They're very detailed. They're both very concise and informative. Okay. We're going to go past public participation, since I did that already. Future board meeting dates, July 21st and August 18th. And we have no PTO report tonight. Is that correct? And administrator supervisor reports. Ryan, would you like to go first?
Yep, mine is just going to be really brief. We're off to a good start here this summer. We have several of our final building referendum projects started over the summer. If you're walking the hallway right now, a couple of hallways are ripped up. There are getting new flooring. So that is stuff that we had approved this spring. So it's exciting to see all that work happening. Robert's Buildings and Grounds crew is doing some amazing work at getting everybody ready and being responsive to all of the needs from the referendum, but also having our Boys and Girls Club here for the summer as well. So as always, they're doing an amazing job getting us ready and kind of being flexible and changing on the fly based on what the day throws at them. So some good things there. We're excited to have our graduation on that Friday in May this year. Everything went incredibly well, and so we are excited to bring that back to Friday night graduation. Last month, I spoke about our stellar virtual contract. We're still in some talks right now. We have our lawyers working on the final contract language, and we've also involved our insurance company, M3, in the conversation, just to make sure that we are fully covered and there is no issues there. So we have hopefully the last meeting on Thursday to finalize that, so I can bring a final contract and a final recommendation to the board in July. Also, last month, I spoke to the facility study, and that's on our discussion, part of the agenda later today. And those are all of my updates for right now.
All right. Great news. I'm going to read the A.D. report, so we can recognize the kids that are involved in these teams and their successes. Varsity baseball, the boys lost to Crandon in the region semifinals. Sully Perkins and Noah Spielstra made first team All-Conference. Ethan Pesky and Logan Hince made second team All-Conference. Michael Gladuski made honorable mention. Sully Perkins made second team All-District, and Noah Spielstra made honorable mention All-District. Sully Perkins also made the academic All-District, academic All-District, while Noah Spielstra made academic All-State. Varsity softball, the girls lost to Wittenberg in the regional semifinals. McKenna Orson made first team All-Conference. Sam Nguyen made second team All-Conference. Delaney Connor and Ivy Belk made honorable mention All-Conference. McKenna Orson made the WFSC All-Star Game and played last Tuesday at Woodside Sports Complex in Naddells. She had two walks and had a great time. Congratulations, McKenna. Varsity girls soccer, the girls lost to Ashland in the regional semifinals. Clara Llewellyn and Hannah Rakuski made first team All-Conference. Ava Lansing and Mia Rockefeller made second team All-Conference. Ella Thompson made honorable mention All-Conference. Varsity golf, the boys did not make it out of regionals this year. Trent Simonas and Daniel Eichman made first team All-Conference. Elijah Zocheski and Ben Kisting made second team All-Conference. Varsity track, state track meet, Lexi Werzbaum made it to state in the Discus and placed seventh. She threw a PR of 129 feet, six inches, placing her second in school history. Girls basketball, the girls and I will be at UWSP Basketball Camp from Sunday, the 22nd through Tuesday, the 24th. We are looking forward to learn and to get better. Olivia Davis is playing in the Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Association All-Star Game this Wednesday at 12:30 at Just a Game Fieldhouse in Wisconsin Dells this past Wednesday? That's coming Wednesday. Okay. And that's all the news in the athletic director's report. Congratulations to all. Charter staffing updates. Al, we're going to take the mic.
I just want to say also, we had a great end to our year. Leno, I haven't been here since May. We packed up SWEZ and ended both onsite and virtual with a really exciting year. It was a year of growth, is what I keep saying to the staff. And while we were growing, I think that what we provided to the families of our school was still a real high-quality program. So I'm really proud of the staff and the things they did this year to really support that school, because it's a great year of personal, professional growth for me, learning about how that school ran, and then them accepting and running with some of the ideas I had to support the school as well. So it's really been a really fun time. I did put a little memo in there for you, just because we are experiencing some growth. And we met today as an ad hoc committee to look at staffing. And the number on there is if every student that we have started filling out our application process came to the school, that is kind of where our budget would be. Now, we know that those kids all won't come, right? So we kind of met today to say, like, this is what it could be. What is a reasonable and respectful amount of growth that is sustainable for our school? Because we, you know, it'd be great to just have every kid come, but then are we growing faster than we can kind of support? So what we met today was kind of to talk about what are some kind of more urgent needs that we can, you know, sustain, that we need to kind of sustain and grow in a path that is manageable for us as a school? So while there's a pretty big number of where our budget could be, a proposal that you may see in July will be a reasonable growth number, because that number would support more of an unsustained growth for our school. Growing, the potential would be over 110 students enrolled in the virtual school, which would be really challenging to basically go from under 50 last year to well over 100 next year. So I think that the steps that we kind of started mapping out today are reasonable. And I would prefer to kind of end how we did this year with a good amount of funds that we can say, hey, like, how can we set ourselves up for the future? And I think the staff see that as well. I think they feel, I learned in our committee meeting today, that they worry about quote-unquote "being burned," like they maybe had in the past, where these people say they're going to come, and then they don't show up. So I think that we're on a good path. So there's no action needed from that. I just wanted to let you all know, hey, we're meeting to support some growth, and you may see something in the July meeting.
Thanks. Any others?
Sherri. I am going to share some very good results from the elementary from the end of the year. So with Act 20, anyone who scored in between kindergarten and third grade in the lowest 25th percentile with a screener needed to have what's called a PRP, and that's a personal reading plan. I set a goal at the beginning of the year for our number to decrease from fall to spring by 25%. So however many students we had that had to go on a PRP, I was hoping we would decrease by 25%. Well, I had to adjust that because the screener that we used in the fall was different than what the state mandated, and so we used a different screener in the winter. So I was hoping that just from winter to spring, we could decrease by maybe 25%. Hard work by those elementary teachers, by the kids, with the leadership of Sarah Schuneman and Bobby Snyder in reading. Our students' percentage of students that had a PRP from January to May decreased by 43%. That's incredible, in five months' time. So that's a huge shout-out to every single person that works in the elementary in all areas, because it was definitely a group effort. So that was great news. Just, I don't want to like wrap up one year and put a lot of energy into the next year, all in the same meeting, but we're going to, because it's the end of June. So fall in-service looks really great. I'm excited about this year's agenda, and I know we'll be talking about having a board member come to our breakfast on Monday morning. But we have, I believe, the best welcome-back speaker that we've ever had here. I truly believe that this year. So if any of you are available to come Monday morning, I don't know, the date's in your packet, August 26th, maybe? 26th, 28th, something like that, it's in there. Please come, because he is going to be amazing. The next day, the Tuesday of in-service, we are combining with the Iola School District, and we are doing an ed camp together. So Iola's coming here, and we have teachers leading teacher groups together. All assistants this year will be receiving some reading training. So Andrea has kind of worked through some of that with CISA 5, so they'll also be getting some nice reading training to be able to use in the classrooms. We'll do a lot of math work in grades 6 through 12 primarily during in-service. Letters training, which is what this school is doing. Are you, he's, are you?
He's finished.
You're finished. So charter is ahead of us on that. But 4K through 5th grade, next year we're going to include 5th grade on some letters training. And then for anyone who doesn't teach math in grades 6 through 12, they are going to get some literacy through the curriculum training. So it will be a very busy four days, open houses in there, too, classroom prep, but it'll be great learning from others. So.
All right. Good news. Any others?
Briefly.
Okay.
I just wanted to fill you in on a couple of trainings that I went to the first full week of June. So June 9th and 10th, Andrea, Jen Burdan, Leah Maves, and I went to the Portage County Annex Building, and we did a training on dialectical behavior therapy, which is this method of communicating with students that allows them to explore some sides of their social, emotional learning, and will allow us to connect with kids in ways that we were not able to do before, or at least provide us tools to do it better. So that was a really good training. I was really excited to be able to provide that opportunity to Jen and to Leah. And Andrea and I really, I think we grabbed some good things out of there, too. We can use some universal language as we communicate with students and pass that information along to teachers as well. And then on Friday, the 13th, I actually went to Stevens Point Area Senior High School, SPAS, and did a training on behavioral threat assessment and management. So I'll be bringing that information to the team, so that we can talk about improving or changing or reviewing at least the way that we respond to potential threats, and just look at ways that we can identify and manage those threats as they occur. So a couple of interesting trainings that I was able to attend in June. And the June 13th one was free, which is pretty great. So those went pretty well. Thanks very much.
All right. Thanks for the party. Not much change in the official enrollment report from last month to this month. Numbers stayed the same, same throughout. So total district enrollment in all schools, 1216 at the end of June. Moving on to the consent agenda, if there's any items in there you'd like to address individually, we can pull those out with a motion. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to discussion action items. First one being the Eagle Scout Project presentation in your packet. We have a spokesperson here? Yes, we do. You have the microphone. And thank you for coming tonight, and we're interested in what you have to say. This is, this looks pretty good for the district.
We can share, too.
Yeah. How many you got?
You guys good?
Okay. And before you start, as soon as you're ready, introduce yourself to us, so we know who's talking, and we'll go from there. All set? Okay. For you.
Hello, my name's Isaac Spoelstra, and I'm a Boy Scout in Troop 201 in Plover, Wisconsin. And right now, I'm a Life Scout, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout. And the main part of it is the Eagle Scout Project, and I want to make a disc-off course around the walking path. All three of my brothers have also done a disc, not a disc-off course, a Eagle Scout Project here at the school, and I want to be the fourth one. So what I am planning is a nine-hole disc-off course around the walking path, and I also want to have concrete pads for a throwing platform. I want to have signs pointing to where the next hole is and how far away the hole is. And I want everybody to be able to use the disc-off course how they would like, and I want it to be free of charge. And on the papers I gave you, there's like a, how the course is going to be, but that's not the exact course yet. It's just kind of showing how, where it's located. It's going to be around that area. It's not going to be exactly where each hole is yet. We'll go over that later, and then I'll get that, I'll show that. And then I think it'd be very beneficial, beneficial because it would be a great place for people to have fun and play disc golf. I asked a couple of gym teachers. They said this would be a great thing for the school. It would be good for gym classes and to learn a new skill. It can also be used for the Tomorrow River School District's staff development. Students can use the course for recreation and getting together with friends. The course will also provide a local place for the community to learn and play disc golf. I have already contracted Alchemy Concrete, and they gave me a quote, which I had seen in one of the papers, for $3,520, and that doesn't include fill or prep work, but the prep work, me and other scouts and other helpers will do. And I'm pretty sure Mr. Ruggles said that they're making a softball batting cages, and they might have some extra leftover for that. I also contacted Mr. Vanderlon, and this is a project he's always been wanting to do. And he already has five baskets for the course, so we just have to get four more, and they're about 500 apiece. So it'd be $2,000 for the baskets. My family is donating wood posts, and I'm estimating $500 for signs. I'm asking to approve this project and secure the funding, and I'm estimating the amount to be $6,150. Do you guys have any questions?
What is the, the cost is, you're talking for the concrete and then the five, the four, did you say?
Yeah, and for the four, the baskets.
That's what comes to your final cost.
And some signage.
And some signage. That's what your final cost.
Yeah. Well, it's not the final cost, it's like a rough estimate.
For the difference, for the pads and so forth? Yep.
Pardon me for not being familiar with disc golf, but concrete pads, is that where you throw from and then throw to? Like there's a basket and then a pad for the next hole?
No, so it's like, it's like the, kind of like in golf where there's a tee box. That's where you start off. You start on the pad, and then you follow your disc, and then you try to make it to the basket.
So a concrete pad, concrete pad, two for each?
No, there's only one for each hole.
So there's not a concrete pad or a basket?
No.
It's just there in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be concrete, but not around, no, no, just to put in.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to say, I was thinking about putting just a little bit of wood chips around the hole. Yeah, I don't think it'd be a huge cost.
This is just a question on, is from the, from the pad where you tee off to the hole, you have diagrams of each hole, is there going to be demarcation on the turf or on the ground? So.
Oh, I was going to make a sign, and then I was going to show.
Just going to like, I mean, like, how will someone who's playing know which direction they go? Like, some of the, in some of the drawings here, it shows a little angle in the course or in the hole itself? Is there something to be marked there for that?
I was planning on like making a sign, and it would show kind of like a little map of.
A picture of it, then?
Yeah, a picture of it, and it would kind of show where it is. And you also might be able to see the hole from where you're throwing.
I'm a little familiar with disc golf, because my, both of my older sons play it. And I know that even if you did mark that, people look for shortcuts around that anyway. They'll go through the woods or whatever. And the only other one is, have we given any consideration to walkers going on the path if somebody's playing disc golf?
That's my question.
Is there like a rule for yielding to the walkers or something? Or like, we can include with any signage that talks about course courtesy and things like that? Because.
Or are we disrupting the walking trail? That's what my question is. Are we taking it away?
And was it donated by the International Bank of Amherst? So is that something that should be a discussion with them? Like what they?
Just, just a way of making both walkers and golfers aware.
But still, even with a sign there, are you taking away from the, from the walking trail by having this? Are you going to, people are going to be like, okay, well, I don't really want to go in there, because I don't shake a chance of getting hit.
Yeah, and that's why I brought this up, and I actually heard that question.
That was my question with reading it, is are we taking away from the walking trail? Because now people might not want the walking trail because of, you know, and nothing against the kids, but next thing you know, you have 10, 15 kids out there playing golf, and people are like, eh, there's kids out there. The next thing you know, they don't even use it anymore. So maybe, like you said, the International Bank of Amherst might get their opinion on it, and.
Because they have their benches throughout the whole thing. I walk it a lot, and if there was kids playing, I wouldn't walk it. I would just avoid it, because I, you know, the same thing. But that, you know, it's not like there aren't plenty of places to walk in the village.
Still, there was.
But that's what it was meant for. So I would want to, I would want to make sure that the bank wouldn't be on, like, they would be okay with it. So I would say that would be a conversation that you should probably make an appointment with the bank, with what's at the bank, would be my guess, and get his blessing. I don't know.
Could, could possible options be to have the holes not be on the other side of the trail from where the tee boxes are? I mean, if you look at the drawing, several of them are that way, where they're on school property where the tee box is, and the hole is on the other side of the trail going towards a railroad track, like hole number six. Hole number two does the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe a different, slightly different placement would improve the work.
Well, and these are some recommendations that he started with as well. The final course layout would be based on a walkthrough with Robert and with Adam Miller, just to make sure that it doesn't interfere with any of our sports fields. And I would say also, in regards to the walking trail, you know, if this were to pass, we can make some signage that would go, that would hopefully talk about golf etiquette as well. I think that would, that makes sense. Go ahead, Robert, I'm sorry.
I've talked with Kevin, I know one of all this golf courses that he wants to put out there for this week. And I know that he has an individual in the community that has worked on designing courses.
Pro golfer or something like that?
I don't know what he is.
They make money doing disc golf.
It says it in there, yeah.
The design isn't, the prop design, because certain things might come into play, such as utilities, right? There's going to be every place that you choose to go ahead with this, every place that he chooses to put a hole in the ground, I'm going to have to check to make sure there's no utilities there.
That's an added cost.
That's going to be added cost, and that could be $200 or $300, depending on how many spots they need to check. Most of it, I googled what I've seen from Kevin's old map, really didn't go anywhere, nearly left for another couple. So just so you know that. I know that Kevin has worked hard to do this. He's already bought a few of them years ago. He's had them forever. The students currently utilize the athletic compound to play prismi golf for FIA. So you'll see them out there chucking prismis all over the place, and they just literally set up a temporary prismi golf course. He's going to get the prismi course and I'll put it in the order. So they're currently using it. I don't know how that's going to impact community members utilizing their walking trail.
It sounds like it's possible to reroute some things to avoid the trail.
Or even post-hours of usage or something like that, so that after a certain time, I mean, you really can't disc golf in the dark too well, or near dusk. I mean, so if you had like daytime hours for its usage, I'm sure there's some conversation that can be had with the bank, since they're the stakeholders on the trail. Any others?
That would be an important thing to do, to be done, because they do support the school.
So that's a recommendation we're making.
Are we a little closer to ball fields? That we'll be concerned about that during sporting events?
Kevin does his FIA, he's up against the fence, he's everywhere, you know? So it depends on the placement, you know? When we get the final design of where the fence is, it doesn't make sense. You know, yes, you do want to have obstacles in the way that they have to work around, whether it be trees or brush, or whatever it might be, you just, you want to have obstacles. It needs to be challenging. It doesn't need to be the parking lot straight down.
What I'm saying, like, the one, number one goes right by the softball field. Were you taking chances of that getting in there during a softball game? Or the baseball one going over the top of the trees?
You could, because I see, we have to unlock the gates every now and then, let students go in and retrieve their prismis when they do FIA. So it's just about placement, right? Maybe you're, maybe you're actually shooting from there to another location. Maybe you're not shooting from pin to pin to pin. Maybe you're just shooting, get to the next pin, you go, and you're softball, trying to push him away from your softball.
Yeah, two goes away. So there's some things to consider here.
Is this considered, what is this going to be considered, club sport, or is it just wide open to whoever?
Not open to the public?
Open to who? Anybody?
Yeah.
You and I could go out there if we want.
Well, just making sure that we don't run into another spot where we're making a sport for somebody, and then we're caught.
Oh, sure. Are there more questions?
So each pad is four by eight?
Yeah, four by eight.
Is it, yeah, so is your, you, I mean, I guess I'm not familiar with disc golf either, are you trying to make the basket from that point?
Uh, I mean, not exactly, you just kind of, you need some room to throw.
Okay.
So you kinda need the pad to be kinda big.
You can have a step, right, so you can actually step forward. If it was four by four, it'd be kinda hard to do.
I still think it helps if you're giving it a target box.
That makes sense.
Try.
Kinda why I'm asking how, how necessary is it if you're stopping three times one way anyway?
It looks like the standard size.
I would recommend, so, uh, these courses are in, where there's people walking, there in parks all the time. Some of them have trails where they're in rivers, um, the one at the right most recently, Ash Ben, there's people who go and scamble their first discs, know people do with them. So at least that won't be too much for the children, they just be able to retrieve their, just pretty easily.
Yeah, we don't have a ton of real estate, we almost have to poll mingle our acreage.
Yes. Yeah.
Right.
I imagine this is designed to be a beginner's one?
Question for, for the board is, where would our funds come from? Would they come from Falcon Pride? Or they come directly from general funds?
They'll come from the general funds, yeah. I, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking from Falcon Pride, cause, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this something we would have room for in the budget, for next year's budget?
For six thousand, yeah, we can make, we can make six thousand.
Or would reducing it from a nine hole to a five or six or seven hole? And avoid the trail a little bit more?
We have five baskets.
Right, if you went one through five, you'd avoid most of the trails.
What is like the standard for this game? Is it nine?
It's normally nine, so I think some big ones are eighteen, but maybe nine.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just checking, I don't know.
I would say, you know, we're thinking of going to, to like the five holes, but we're trying not to be kind of like that.
Be the next Eagles Gals project.
Cornhole field. So, more questions?
Asking Alcemi to come back at a later time might be more of an inconvenience than anything, I guess. I don't know, you have to think of construction too, if they're coming now. I would say I'm definitely want the bank's blessing before I make a decision, but that's me.
I would agree with that.
So, I would say it would have to be tabled at this point.
Making a motion to table it?
Yep.
For the purposes of feedback from the bank? Consider the stakeholders on the walking trail? And also, I don't know, if you need more, if, if you need to do any more?
Just need them to dial in on these locations.
Okay.
As soon as I know the locations, we can tell them how and I can get the private answer.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion to table, table it until we get a, just a little more information? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second?
From a building's ground perspective, DCA conflicts with just, you know, ground maintenance.
Please pick up your, um, frisbees.
More work.
Concrete paths are easy to drive over, but you have the poles to go around this.
And how, do you feel okay about having the chips around?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that? I'm just talking more work for you.
It's gonna be a waste of money.
What's that?
The water trips would be a waste of money, because over time, though-
It break down.
Teriate, break down.
Yep.
I almost think like that circles just keep going around without having to weed it or anything, it would be, yeah.
Okay, well, we can, we can, that can be part of the future discussion. Um, so right, right now we have a motion and a second to table it till the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
We're definitely interested, we just wanna make sure it's done right for the community, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, review and possibly approve requests for installation of batting cage and naming rights.
This memo here is the same one.
It's the same memo as last time, do we have other information?
I was in contact with an individual on, um, the batting cages, I went to Bondewell, I looked at the batting cages all up there.
I think Robert should use a microphone, you guys, just because of the camera, sorry. But if people are listening and they don't know what's going on.
Just so, no one knows me, I'm Robert Smith, Director of Buildings and Grounds. But I went to Bondewell to look at their batting cages, I was not impressed with batting cages, they used a galvanized pipe. All the pictures that I took from them, they showed that they were kinda twisted off and bent in different directions, because you're running your net on a cable across the top and of course, the weight of that net, um, people holding onto it sometimes, um, kinda tweaks those poles. So I've been in contact with a gentleman here, um, in Amherst about creating a, a four by, a four by four inch, um, steel pipe that we'd be able to put a boat crank on for the cables to go on, it'll be a lot sturdier. It, uh, won't allow for that bend that I seen up to Bondewell. They have a great idea, I'm stealing all their ideas, I just would rather go with a four by four, um, post that's sixteen foot tall. Uh, most nets are fourteen foot tall. Depending upon sixty to seventy feet, depending on softball, baseball, we're looking at seventy feet. So, working with that, um, still in the process, I sent off the design to that individual. They're supposed to get back with me, they think that they could possibly knock out all the poles that I need for it within a couple of weeks timeframe, as long as everything's moving smoothly.
Budget or price on the poles and the netting? You know, how much dollars in the car?
Well, depending on, if you were to buy the system, I'm looking at designing, um, the system would cost you anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars with nets, poles.
And nets and cranks.
Right, cranks and all that.
Okay, okay.
I think we'd be at it for under two grand for the poles, then it's just mounting them up and then running cable ourselves. Um, then it would just be the batting nets themselves, which are not as expensive.
Are they, are the nets, do you get in custom sizes to?
You can get custom sizes, but then you're spending more money, right? And a batting cage is usually, um, fourteen feet tall, roughly fourteen feet wide and sixty, seventy feet, um, depending on baseball, softball. So you get a stand, we just need a standard net, we really don't need to be looking at customizing an eighty foot net, you're just gonna spend a lot of money that I don't think you need to.
Then we, got a little bit of information from one of the contractors here.
So we reached out to Fox Brothers.
Yeah.
And Bob came up with a good idea. We originally talked about putting a cement slab out there. And Bob brought up the idea, why don't we just use what we have? Cause we're gonna have turf, leftover turf on the football field. So Bob had a good idea, why don't we just use, um, what's on, yeah, crushed limestone, what's underneath the football field instead of doing concrete?
Cause that's how you put the turf down.
And then put turf on top of that.
Put turf on top of that. And it would drain better, and all that stuff, so, um-
So then you would just need like a twelve by, twelve inches wide, twelve inch tall, um, perimeter, uh, footing, and you can fill it up with, with an inch or so, reveal. And then the guy from, uh, Falls Dakota said, um, we put drain cover on, on the inside of it, so you can get in drainage and it can go out. Which I thought would be pretty good.
And he's gonna put shallow, the shallower, uh, drain tile in there so that it, you get a good rain, you should, within a short period of time. Cause he said if we go farther down, uh, that you get a big rain, could be two days before you're able to use it again, so, I said it. So they gave us a firm, they gave us their firm number. And I don't think there's anybody else we're gonna reach out to when it comes to doing that. Not, not anybody local anyways, that does this kind of-
They can do everything.
Yeah, they can do everything.
Site work and the concrete and everything.
We have a local person that has donated their time and matu- uh, equipment to take all the trees out. So, Fox Brothers doesn't have to do any of the excavating, they don't have to bring their machine over here, so. I don't know, what are we, are we missing any? The only thing we're missing is possibly doing something to the shed, right?
Right. Which, the shed is, um, currently we have no power in the six bay shed. They would need power to run their batting machines, so their pitching machines, if you will. So I looked at running power from our press box, our current press box, out to the six bay shed. I was looking originally at putting a, a panel out there with its own circuit breakers, so that we could have, uh, put some lights on the outside of the six bay shed on a Friday night football game, it gets pretty dark back there. We have community members that are grilling hamburgers and brats and so on and so forth. So it's really not the safest environment in the sense, cause you, you really, it's just too dark. So my thought was a couple outlets on the outside of the building along for the batting machines as well, or the pitching machines as well as outlets for, um, them to utilize when they're out there grilling as well, and then putting lights in all the six bay garages, uh, bays, there's six of them. So it's just, um, that whole piece to do that would be to get power from the press box. Currently, the press box has a hundred amp. If somebody went out there and seen an outlet and said, oh, well, I'm cooking up these burgers and these brats and I wanna keep them warm, I'm gonna plug in an Esco, they're gonna pop that circuit breaker, right? So to defeat that whole process is, um, to put the right sized panel in that press, or in that six bay garage. One way to do it would be to put a two hundred amp panel in the press box, so that you always have future expansion of power in the press box. As well as moving the one hundred amp panel that's in the press box out to the six bay garage. You wouldn't have to be buying a hundred amp panel, um, because you're taking it from the six bay garage, but you're gonna have to upsize the power of the cable size coming from the six bay garage, or from the press box to the six bay garage. So I did reach out to, uh, Shoemaker Companies and got a quote on that and it came right around a little bit less than fourteen thousand dollars. But there's a lot of, uh, cabling to be pulled, there's a lot of work to be done. Putting lights in the six bay garage, which would be helpful for everybody that's out there, putting away equipment in the early spring and late fall.
So that, that include lighting?
What's it, that included the lighting, everything.
The lighting and the electricity and everything.
It would be everything that I had mentioned, the outlets for, if they wanna plug in some Escos, you'd have the power for it.
And their original suggestion that who's donating the money was just to run one ten over to the dugout?
Oh.
And we said, no, okay, we're, we're not doing that, so. We were more or less given a number. With no plan.
Right.
So the plan has been more or less put on Robert's to s-
To sort it out.
To say, can you show us how we should build this? So this is, uh, what do you call it, a process? You know, it's a time, time thing that we can't approve it again. Because we still don't have all that number.
You said you had a, a hard number from Fox, what is that number?
So, here.
Yeah, let's fucking forward it, I just received it today.
So he's got, which team is, I was surprised to hear this list, but the expedition bill will be eighteen nine, and then another twenty nine hundred to landscape, we spread and fertilize after that, and then plus eight thousand for the concrete, importing the concrete.
You said plus that for the contractor?
Yeah.
That's not included?
Definitely included, yeah.
Oh, you have it?
Okay, thanks, Robert. And like I said, that in-
Springing and fill, leveling, compacting, and then the, so you're looking at basically at thirty grand? Just to get the site prep and ready for poles, and then you have another, you only have a forty thousand dollar donation rate?
Well, they, yeah, but we have to go back to them on that.
Yeah, I think they have more than that.
We told them, they told us that, at, when we met with them, that that's what their, that's what they were told. They were told that this project could be done for forty thousand. But said, if it, if it goes up and above that, don't trash it. Come back to them and say, it's gonna cost umpteen more than that, which we know is going to cost more than that. Cause I think you had, you had said that to them, you don't see this project happening for forty thousand, and they said, well then, if you could please get us the numbers and then, they're not saying that they can do it, but they said there's, is a good probability that they can.
And do you know, um, cause we don't know what the pole's gonna cost that?
No.
Sure. Do we know what it's gonna cost to, do we have enough per country?
We, well, so the whole thing is, you, we're not looking at turfing the whole seventy feet.
Just the batters area.
Just, just where they're batting from. So that they get that same fill that they would if they were on a, on a-
So what fill the rest of the area then?
Well, that would, that would be the, the best part would be if we were just to get an in, a outdoor carpet and place in there.
Concrete?
On the, on the, on the, on the limestone bedding. Bondewell did the same thing, they, they put down a thinner outdoor carpeting. Supposed to be a little bit more rugged than what you'd put on your boat or whatever of that nature, but, uh, that's what they've done. And all they did was double stack turf that they had left over, they got from a project where the batter's at.
So does that stay out year round then? The, uh, outdoor carpeting does?
Yeah.
So that's the one with the, they poured a slab and put the carpet on top of that, on top of that.
That I don't know.
They probably had concrete under there.
I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable going into their batting cage and digging around.
And if we did, if we did, if we did concrete, then this, this would be-
It'd be more.
Yeah, it'd be kind of blown out of the water, the way Dakota talked from Fox's. It would be a lot.
It would be almost unattainable, I mean, concrete cost-
Because when Bob mentioned the idea of that, he said, oh, that's, his words were more or less, that's a lot more doable.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of that, it costs a lot of that, so. But if you're only, we were thinking the whole thing being turf, and you're talking just as, the batting-
We've got enough turf that we could probably make a run of twenty feet in both batting cages, if not more.
And that's another thing you have to reach out to, yeah? In Midwest, right?
Right.
And talk to them, hopefully they would.
Maybe they might be able to pitch to me where they're taking out or replacing turf.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe get some scraps.
So we're thinking maybe, being that he does a fantastic job and they use our field as examples to other people that they would throw us a heck of a deal maybe, installing it?
You can also buy used turf or old turf on Facebook Marketplace, cause I bought some for my campsite.
But anyways, that's just, and that's probably one of the last things-
Road you're gonna cross, really.
The other piece to, um, this whole project was, once again, the electrical is all about the future, right? So we talked about putting a conduit, burying a conduit underneath the batting cages all the way to back behind where the, the batters would be. So that in the future, if you wanted to put some lights out there, you could light it, right? Because down the road, if you have it, they're going to come, you know? And then they're gonna say, well, we need some lights out here so we can see, so we can bat at six o'clock at night. It could be a, an issue that you come up with down the road. So our thought was, let's get the conduit in the ground and have it there, just available. It doesn't, conduits, almost nothing to, to put in, you know, it's cost effective, instead of trying to redo it in the, in the future.
So I'm, I'm hearing a motion to table this until we get all the numbers together.
Table it until, put it on the agenda for July, and it would at least, we can have more discussion.
They were hoping to have something done by the end of August, but I don't know if that's-
Who's there?
Destromsky family.
Okay, okay.
And Adam Miller.
I think there's just too many unknowns yet.
Very much so. Because the garage, going back to the garage with the doors, they were thinking about wheeling the- wheeling the pitching machines out a door, and then back, and then outside, and you just don't see that to be a good thing, that you're wheeling, constantly wheeling, instead of just having maybe two overhead doors for each batting cage? And then, right there, the pitching machines aren't ready to use, you're not constantly moving them, and taking a chance of tipping them over and breaking something.
Then you have the issue of you somehow, if you're going for the gun, you're picking out that way, the ball's going to hit back.
So.
You have to have some kind of netting.
Some kind of netting.
And they do make that netting, that goes inside the cage, that will deflect the ball, not allow it to travel all the way back.
No.
Okay, well, that sounds like a motion. To table it until July, until we get all the, all the additional numbers we're hearing about solidified?
And I'll send that quote from Foxes to everybody.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Motion in second to table until July, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item, 9.3, review and possibly approve steam elevator maintenance contract with Otis, that's what we talked about in the finance meeting, and it sounds like we're ready to make a decision on that.
You said, was it the OS?
Yes, the OS.
Was it 2800 some year?
2020.
A motion to approve the Otis OS plan for 2800 some odd dollars per year?
Second.
Motion in second for 2820 annually for the Otis contract, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9.4, review and possibly approve proposed asphalt projects. We had that presented in the finance meeting as well. Any further questions?
What is the size of the pad for the storage building, Robert? Is it on there?
20 by 30, is that all right? Yeah.
Yep.
For that, we still don't know the price for moving, or utilities?
Just, no, there's no utilities involved, just for moving.
They would take care of, they would take care of the site prep and the, they send everything for that? But not, but not reseating around it?
No, I'd rather, to be honest, I would rather do the reseating myself, because we use an athletic wind grass seed, and I don't want a lot of this rye grass coming in, it just doesn't look well, so I prefer using our grass seed to, to see here.
And the reason for the move is because the building blocks the view?
Yeah, it's not in a good spot.
Okay.
From the bleachers, you can't see the finish line.
Okay.
It was never had to be there.
Where is it right now?
Um, oh, let's see, right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It should be down here more. Robert, no, Joe has the map, will that be, can you just show us on here about where you're thinking, would it come all the way down to here?
You see where the finish line is?
Yeah.
So kind of right there to this.
And then beyond it, though.
Just like here.
So down and then towards the east.
So people here could see?
Yeah. Okay.
It'll be from here.
You know, if you just look at the representation of the pad that's located here, it's going to be the same size.
It should be beyond the finish lines, if there's interference.
And then that allows them to use the walk-through gate, which we're already doing asphalt on, to get all the heavier equipment to this end of the D of the athletic track area, or they're going to do the high jump and those types of things.
If we approve it, is there still, the latitude is where exactly it goes here?
What's that?
If we approve this, there's still a little latitude, maybe we can ship their own to the spot.
So we'll just approve the pad size, and then shift it, which would be great to get with Jen Lewis, but, and go off, take a look, see what we're closing, looking at.
A motion to approve asphalt pad for track storage building, subject to final location.
Are you also doing the walkway?
Uh.
It's all part of the same motion.
Yeah, yeah. And the recess area walkway.
That walkway, is that, yeah, that's just, the purpose of that is just to.
It's a highlight area, just to.
Make it look nicer, basically?
Well, that as well as, it's hard to grow grass there. It's always washing it off, there's always a safety issue with the back, if the ground washes off, and, you know, especially if you twist an ankle or. If you walk out there right now, you'd be like, we've already put dirt in there three times and shit.
Do you think, is carpeting more than that? You know?
Concrete's a lot more. For one thing, is labor.
Okay, we still have a motion for both the pad and the walkway.
The walkway and the pad.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any more questions?
Is this an American asphalt court? Is this American asphalt? Okay, so I have to abstain?
You have to abstain? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention, just let the minutes reflect that. Motion carries. 9.5, review and possibly approve overnight extended student trip for FFA officers, training summer retreat to Lakewood, Wisconsin, July 22 through 24.
I'll make a motion to approve the FFA trip to Lakewood. I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9.6, appoint board member to address his staff to the Welcome Back Breakfast, August 25.
So who would like to?
Who would like to, or who would you like to?
I'll nominate Mark.
Who are you nominating?
I already do such a good job, unless anybody else really wants to do it.
Anybody feeling brave?
I'll be out of town.
Yeah, really?
He set the 26 aside, and then he found out it was the 25.
Yeah.
Do you like doing it?
I don't mind doing it at all, I enjoy that. But I don't want to take away the opportunity from somebody who might have just gone through Toastmasters or something, I don't know.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Mark, you're doing great, and all of you are invited to that as well.
And we'd love for you to stay our guest speaker.
I will try to be there for moral support.
Okay. All right. 9.7, review and possibly adopt Wisconsin academic standards. This is our annual meeting where we do this.
No changes, just formality.
This is formality, it's state statute.
I got a rubber stamp here somewhere.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Wisconsin academic standards.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and approve insurance renewal premiums for 2526 property liability and workers' comp. I'm sure they went down, right?
Actually.
They didn't go up much.
It's work comp that, that pretty much killed us, because our mod rate is going up, injuries.
Yeah, otherwise, property.
They are still doing the 15%. What's the word I'm looking for? Refund at the end of the year.
Dividend.
Dividend, thank you. And cyber insurance went way down, because they're finding most companies now are going with so many different MFAs, multi-factor authentications, that there's been a lot less claims and stuff like that, so. I didn't think it was a bad renewal, considering how much property, the general liability of property and stuff has gone up over the past four years, you know? Look at your home, my homeowner's insurance is an example, it's just skyrocketing.
Yeah, it's crazy right now.
So. And EMC has been very responsive and very good to work with for the cyber end of things, for the work comp end of things. We really are fortunate not to have really any other claims in quite a while. Yes.
Okay.
I think it's real worth it.
Who'd like to make a motion?
Motion through the contractor, the insurance, and three?
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You now have in front of you your second reading on adoption of the new Neola policy, Act 20. We had a little inkling on some of the terms in that policy from Sherry when she gave a report on our kids that needed reading, you know, intervention.
As far as this policy, is it just?
This is new.
This is new.
This would be a new policy. It's, it is completely brought on by the new Act 20 law, so we are required to have it in place by July of this year, even though it doesn't take effect until 2027. But we're required to have it by July and have it on our books, just for a general awareness for families.
So you already have it in place, or actually?
We do have most questions in place, so this includes a remediation policy as well of students exiting third grade and the fourth grade, and so that piece would go into full effect in 2027. Which includes specific summer school for students who have not exited their PRP and/or scored proficient in the formal exam.
I have a question on the second page of this, where the items A through H, just that have the strike throughs, what are those strike throughs for? Does that mean we're not opting to use those, or? It says, reaching the decision to promote or retain, we'll carefully consider relevant factors, including but not limited to.
Yeah, we elected to keep it as brief as possible, but knowing that we are going to take into effect lots of factors when we're making decisions.
So A through H would not be included?
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions, or is everybody quietly reading?
Quietly reading. Do we really have a choice?
No, we're required to have it in place by July.
I mean, before it goes into effect, then maybe Neola tweaks to it, but.
I'm sure overall, lots of things around Act 20 will evolve over the course of the next year, absolutely.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion to adopt the new Neola policy, Act 20.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have a document that Ryan handed out to you, we're going to discuss facility study planning, I believe.
Sorry, I turned my mic off. So the facility study has been a topic for us for a while. There were some questions that came up this winter about, hey, what's next, and what are some of the needs from the building and the district level as we finished the referendum? So we started some conversations with several different organizations to talk about what they could potentially offer for a facility study. So Robert and I met with four different groups. We met with Performance Services, we met with a group from CISA 10, facilities planning, we met with Nexus, and we also talked with Huffman, because they were the ones that did an original facility study before we embarked on our building referendum project here. Now, all four were very different in what they, in how they do the facility study and what they offer. Both Nexus and Performance Services have a very similar service, where they offer a free facility study as part of their business model. And what that, what essentially they're trying to do with their free facility study is, is show their collaboration, show their skills, show the quality of their product, in hopes that somewhere down the line, that they may be able to attain our business by managing a project for us that, that might be on that facility study recommendation list. Now, in talks with both Performance Services and Nexus, you know, Robert and I were very, we wanted to be very transparent that, you know, just if we move forward with you and we decide, hey, we weren't incredibly happy with, let's just say, for instance, we weren't incredibly happy with the work, we didn't love the facility study, or we didn't have a great experience, you know, we didn't want to, that free study to enter us into a long-term arrangement with either of those groups, I said, this is kind of a test run, and we said, if that's the thinking here, then we'd rather just pay for the service and say, you know, thanks, and let's see if we want to work together from there. So we had good conversations with those folks about that, and we said our intent is not just to get a free service, we want to make sure we're partnering with the right company, and we have a really good product, and we can, and we feel good going back to the community and saying, hey, here's our needs, and now, now we're going to use that to help build our five, 10, five and 10-year long-range building plan, for, you know, replacement costs and such. CISA 10, so each CISA kind of has different strengths, if you will, and CISA 10 is known for some of their facilities planning and buildings and ground support. We had a great meeting with them, just felt that they were a little limited in some of their local contracts, per se, although you can see on the memo, they gave us two different quotes, one for just a basic facilities audit, and then one for a high-level audit that included some energy analysis, and also some work that would match with our, the building projects with a long-range strategic plan. Last, we.
Those are two different options.
Those are two different options, yeah. Last, we partnered, we reached out to Huffman, who we partnered with on the referendum, and said, hey, what would it cost to update this, the facility study, now that we've gone through the building process? And their quote for us, that included some online visits, and this is kind of starting from scratch, but also would include some work with our charter, was 21,600. So you can see quite a difference when we're looking from a free facility study to one of a few, a couple thousand, all the way up to 21,000. So I said, they're all very different in their scope.
Off the top of my head, I think we're at 298,000 square feet, all depending on whether or not you're talking about cleanable surface, or, but those are all me taking measurements within the room.
If they're charged by the square foot, how many square feet would they be charging them for?
I would say that they're probably going to be charging you for 300,000 square feet.
Nine grand.
And some of them, three to four cents a square foot.
And from your perspective, how essential do you think this is at this time?
We need to get back to our plan, right? We, if we don't, I think it's very essential, because it'll allow us to figure out in five years, what are the five-year items that we should be looking at replacing? And then, what is the long-range, the 10-year plan, of what's that going to look like on, whether it's a VFD drive, whether it's an air handler, whether it's a motor, whatever it might be, we still have old equipment in the building, even after this referendum.
Do you think we should be reviewing the last edition of this, because didn't Huffman do this, as part of the?
Huffman did a facility study as the last part of our referendum, so honestly, just me speaking, if I had done it, I would have been able to easily turn around and said, this is what was left over from the facility study. Right? But they were everywhere throughout the building, change orders came in, things have been pulled out that are on that study that haven't, we never got a. never got a drop-dead list of scratching off the items on that facility study to say that these were reduced off of our five- or 10-year plan. So we don't have a five- or 10-year plan. And to go back through that and dig through all that paperwork to figure that out is going to be extremely difficult.
Do these plans cover the grounds outside of the building?
They should, they should cover everything. They should cover everything that's on the campus, whether it's asphalt, whether it's rough, whether it's air handling units, plumbing. We did a lot of plumbing projects in this last project because we had a lot of old plumbing in the building. But how much of that encompassed the building? Do I have a map of that? I don't.
I think an updated facility study is important so we can get back to our long-range strategic plan for buildings and grounds, and so we can earmark which projects we're going to take on each year. And additionally, you know, we, when we passed our operating referendum a couple years ago, it was just a three-year, it was just a three years. We built back some trust, and we're going to be coming up on that three-year pretty soon. So I think it would be good for us to have all of our ducks in a row, have all the information when we come back for, to renew the operating referendum, and hopefully it's the same price again, that we can say, "Here's what we're asking for again, just to renew our operating referendum, and here's our long-range building strategic plan. Here's what we're working on over the next several years." I think that would keep it very transparent and would be a good thing for the community.
How would this apply to the charter, since it's not really our, kind of ours?
Yeah. We've had some talks with Al and also with UW Stevens Point about that, that we're kind of at an impasse out there from our growth standpoint. So we want to, we want to kind of get an outside eye on that as well, because we have some growing needs out there as well, along with some safety things that we'd like to address from a, just a ground standpoint.
Are we opting for the no-cost option with Nexus?
That's where I would like to land, but I wanted to open it up to the board for discussions if it's important that, we're like, hey, we want to make sure that this is no strings attached.
Okay, so as part of the Nexus one, that's not, that doesn't match what CISA 10 says as far as this much for 8,000, for a high-level audit? We're not getting a high-level audit, correct?
It is a very high-level audit, actually. Nexus says, I have a copy of theirs from, I believe it was O'Kanto, was it O'Connell Falls, that they shared? And honestly, it is, it is intensive.
Does it include energy analysis and strategic, really?
Yeah, there's a ton within it.
What you're talking about is basically going through all the asphalt, so putting that into a facility study to see what's been updated and what's not. So would they, I'm assuming Huffman would probably do that for their 21, but would the other places do?
Well, they would bring in and go from air bars.
It would start all over?
See what we have.
First set eyes.
Some of that stuff, you know, like, say, there's change orders with the plumbing and stuff that you're not going to be visible.
Yeah. So they would bring in engineers, they would bring in air control that would go on scope every one of the drains again, and make sure that they got it with all the plumbing, all the systems that are in the building.
So CISA would do it for eight, or Nexus would basically do it for nine, is what you're saying?
If you pay for it.
To be honest, I don't see that CISA 10 has the professional personnel to do the deep dive.
And I guess those are the askings, would Nexus do it for the nine, for three cents per square foot?
So is there a difference between the free one and the three cents per square foot?
It should be the same.
The same.
The exact same.
You're just kind of paying them...
Because I don't want to marry somebody...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right, you're paying for the opt-out.
They're giving you that option, kind of.
What are the strings attached to the free option, then, right?
Yeah.
Because they would love to, if they found an issue with the coolers in the kitchen, then I can see them wanting to pressure you into getting those coolers repaired and fixed, right? Because they told you, these are your priorities, these are your primary priorities, let's work on these first. They want to get through and do it because that's how they're going to earn your relationship and stay working for you.
And they want you to hire them, or their contractors that they work with?
Yep.
Basically.
Yep.
And that's what they, you know, I'm at the State School Board Convention with Ryan, and that's what they had explained to us, too. And they have ties to the area, at least the lady that we talked to knew people here in Amherst, so, I don't know. It's always going to be a conversation, too.
It's just their business model.
Yeah.
And that 300,000 square feet is just the building. So if you're going outside, too, would that mean that that would increase? Just so you know, like, you know...
Yeah, they don't count the lot, the field as square footage.
Yeah, I don't know. Then they're really, I'm just saying, I don't know.
I think there's nothing to expect.
I mean, that could be in there, but then when they come back and say, "Oh, you have 6,000, 600,000 square feet because we did this and this," you know, and the charter school and whatever else they're going out to do. So, so maybe if you're going to go with them and you're going to decide to pay, get a quote first.
I don't know if this is the right, if Huffman and Nexus were the same price, would you still like to go with Nexus?
Yeah.
You would?
Do you have the old facility study, which is PDF, or is it all, did you forward it to everybody? For leisurely reading?
Leisurely reading.
One last question on the Nexus issue, and that is, you know, we know we can pay the option, three cents per foot. Do you have to make that decision before they do the assessment? Or can you have them do the free one first? And then if you're satisfied?
Yeah, we, yeah, and we wouldn't have to decide right now. And we were very open, we were very transparent about that in our conversation, and just said, "Hey, look, again, we, you know, we want to see this study here before we get into a long-term relationship." And I said, "What if we decide that we're going to do some of these smaller projects? And granted, you're going to make lots of recommendations, some are going to be bigger, some are going to be smaller. And if we're going to take on a few of those things?" And I said, "Ryan, our concern would be if we offered up like a long-range plan, and all of a sudden you just started implementing everything and didn't, you know, work with us on the rest." Yeah, that would be concerning to us, but obviously we recognize that you're going to probably take some of these projects and do some things, some updates on your own. So, you know, obviously, changing out light in is not something they're going to make a lot of money on, so if that was something that was recommended, I use that example because I know Robert's already done that project, but, you know, that would be something we could do on our own, and we wouldn't have to contract with anybody to do, so.
I want to table it until we, I want to ask some questions outside the meeting.
Okay. Absolutely. And...
I think it's good to review what we did previously, too, and see what's in hand.
And Lauren indicated she'd be willing to come to the board meeting, too, and connect with the group and ask some questions as well. I mean, we have time this summer to make this decision, so even if we table it to July and we're able to make a decision July, the hope would be to get them here in August so that they have range of the building before it's full of, you know, 900 students.
All right. Sounds like a motion from Kirk, who said, like, a second, something like that. So, motion in second to table that until we get some more questions answered.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's it for our regular items on the agenda, other than future, we already have some future agenda items. We've got the Eagle Project, we've got the batting cage, we've got stuff like that. So if there's anything else, we'll just take them as they come, unless you can think of something now.
Just hoping to put the final touches on the stellar contract, too, so...
Okay, yep, all right. Then I'm going to need a motion to go in closed session, so, so you make that motion.
Yeah. The Board of Education reserves the right to declare closed session pursuant to state statutes 19.85, sub 1, sub CE, and F, for the purpose of review and possible discussions relating to employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, confidential salary, support staff, support staff wages, handbook language, and bus transportation contract rates for 2025, '26.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in second. We'll do a roll call vote. Loken?
Aye.